Okay, hi everybody, I am back. Um, I should have charged my headphones during that break, but I did not, so let's see what happens. They should survive for another hour and then we take a break. Good to go, okay. So, um, okay, I got one message during the break, let's see. Oh, slash slash works better, if I just slash slash here, is that the same thing? Yes. Slash slash is that, okay, good, thank you, yes, that works nicely. Um, okay, so first of all, yes, I am back on mine, everybody can see, okay. So, I was thinking that now we can go through some, maybe some examples with pointers, I guess, that's what I was trying to think of, like, that would be the next thing that we deal with. Uh, this test is done, I'm just gonna look through here, this is what I'm looking at, so this is what I have. Um, this test is done. Identify the invalid expression or choose all are valid out of this. Uh, this might be good to try, some of these, if we can get this, we did these yesterday, I remember doing those yesterday, so let's try a couple of these maybe. And see which ones are, uh, valid and which ones are invalid. And, uh, you know, practice that a little bit, so. And if anybody has any questions, send them to me, because that's, you know, probably I'll do that next. Okay. Okay, so. Um, I can't really read that, but it's R minus underscore X, I think that's what that is. Um, so that's not valid, I'm pretty sure, so this, I'll, I'll say what I say, then if anybody else has any other ideas, then tell me. So I'd say that's not valid, so I'll put a red underline under that. C plus negative A. Uh, modulus four plus two, I'd say, I, I think that might be valid. C plus negative A, modulus four, can you do modulus with a negative number? Yeah, I think you, no, you can't do modules with a negative number, can you? Hmm, unless A is a negative number, okay, I don't know, don't know about that one. X minus M plus six minus twenty-four, V, that is invalid because of V twenty-four. Um, I'm pretty sure, so.
What's wrong with V twenty-four?
Uh, because it's, I think it's supposed to be twenty-four V times twenty-four.
Or is it just a variable?
I don't think you can have numbers like, oh no, actually, I guess you could have numbers like that, never mind, yep, so if that's a variable. That, would you say, sorry?
I would say that could, that, that can be a variable, right?
Yeah, that can be a variable, you're right.
Dark with a number, but it has numbers in it?
Yeah, so that, if that's a variable, then that's valid, uh, and then this one, well, similarly, XF three R six could be a variable. Um, so if that's a variable, then it's valid.
Is there a part of this question we're missing?
Uh.
State, like, what, that X is, X and Y and Z are this?
No.
It, oh, it says right before the first question, isn't it, assume all variables are, are integer, well, that doesn't help.
Yeah. And non-zero. Or pointers integers. Um. Identify the invalid expression or choose all are valid, oh, okay, so hold on, I selected multiple that were invalid, so. This one is valid if that's a, if that's a variable, this one's a valid if that's a variable, this one seems valid to me, this one is not valid, you can't start with an underscore, I'm pretty sure, so. This is invalid. So that's the answer, that's the answer, that's the invalid one. So select. The invalid. Uh, expression. So, next one here, what's invalid here, R minus, V minus?
Why is B valid?
B?
Yeah?
Well, C plus negative A modulus four, I guess, neg, can you do modulus with a negative number, I don't know.
Oh, no, but how you think of that as negative A, because, oh, can, can you, because I thought that was the name of the identifier.
What was the name of the, A, A is the name of the identifier, so negative A would just be negative A.
What, what if the name of the identifier was minus A?
Oh, I don't think you can do that, I don't think you can do that.
No, you can't.
You can't, like, cannot?
You can't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, so, okay, so, like, but if we named that as that, as the variable, then wouldn't that be invalid?
If, i- if negative A, like, int negative A. Negative A equals five or something like that, I don't, you just can't do that, that, that just isn't, this isn't something.
Yes.
This would, this would be an error.
No, but then this would, this would be invalid, right?
Oh, if you could do that.
I thought you could start with an underscore.
This would be, this would be, this would be invalid, right?
Yeah, you can, for the, for the A part, you can't have underscore X.
You're allowed to have underscores, I think.
You are?
Yeah. It's the only, the only special character, I think.
I think it's the third hard rule, I'm looking at the rules.
At the start, though?
I don't, I think at the start, you're not.
You can, you can type it in as a variable and it works.
Okay. Um, I have the rules.
You can only not have, you can only not have numbers in the start.
Um. Yeah, I guess so, it doesn't actually say that, yeah? No space or other symbols, yeah, actually, specifically says you can use underscores, okay, so. Um, then this is valid, then, so the invalid one is. Which one, this is, this is the, but this seems valid to me, so is it all invalid, I don't have answers to this, by the way, so. It's, uh.
No, I, see, I'm confused, because like, how it shows that C plus minus, so, I'm thinking that they named the identifier as minus A, so that would be an invalid name, and so the expression would be invalid.
That makes sense, let's try it, let's see if it actually runs anything, if I, if I make something with that expression, right, so if I say. Um, if I say, uh, void. Okay, we have int A equals five, whatever, um, and that's all, and, and, uh, C equals. C equals three, or C equals, yeah, C equals three. Okay, and I just wanna, uh, I'll say, um. Uh, double, uh, answer, so print. And I'll say, answer equals, um. Answer equals, uh, C. C, I'll just write exactly what it said, C plus negative A percent four plus two. Okay, and printf. Answer.
The, the semicolon.
Answer, uh, I was just saying, uh, percent LF. Answer, and yes, semicolon. Um, whatever. Question three, three, day two. So it compiled successfully and it returned a four to me, with that, does that make sense? Um. Three plus, um, five modulus four is one. Yeah, three minus one is, yeah, four, so that is valid, that worked. Um, I, if I say declare that as negative A, compilation failed. So if I declare it just as A. Compilation runs and it's successful. So what it's doing is it's doing A modulus four first, and then it's doing negative of that, and then it's doing C minus, sorry, C plus the negative of that plus two. Which is four.
Uh, what, like, just a bit off topic, what are the rules for, uh, naming variables, is it just like uppercase lowercase, numbers and dash underscore?
They're all in my notes, if you go to my notes, there's five rules, I wrote them there, there, I, I forget what the, I forget what they are.
Where is it, here on the discussion?
Homework help, homework help, if you go to homework help, and for, you know, everybody should know that too here, I have the rules, this is the five rules, well, I guess these are, these are the five rules. So, there, the last two are the soft rules, I'm pretty sure, um, and then the first three are the hard ones, I didn't actually name that, but whatever, they're all rules. Okay. So, there's that, so that expression is valid, so everything else should be valid. The only thing was, is that was being valid, but no, so they're, they're all valid for that first one. Okay, let's try this next one, um. So, V minus R modulus YY one. This should work, YY one is a variable, R modulus that variable, uh, it will be sub number, and then V minus it checks out to me, so that's, seems valid. Um. So, it's valid, so then this one, uh, well, it's open, 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 close, 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 we're good, so P minus bracket, bracket, P minus, P minus P. My closed bracket, closed bracket, yeah, uh, checks out to me. No plus no plus no three halves, well, if, if no three halves is a variable. Then no three halves, it would work, um, we don't know if that's a ver-
Like, you have a division symbol in your variable?
The variable would be no three.
No three, yeah, you're right, no, no three would be the variable, and if it was, yeah, so if no three exists, then yep. Um, similarly, X thirty-three, if that works, if that's a variable, then yes, uh, this does not work, though, so this is invalid. Um, because you cannot have a variable named negative one point four Z. So that's invalid. You can have a variable named C one point four, or no, you can't even have that, you can have a. Yeah, no.
So you can have the decimal in the variable, yeah?
Uh, don't think so, I don't think you can have a decimal in the variable. Let's see, no, you, you can't, I can't say A one point two, no, I can't say that.
Yeah, just look at the rules, and the only, the rules are you can't like have anything that's reserved, and you can only have numbers, uppercase, lowercase, and underscore, it's nothing else, so no dots, no nothing.
So that's the invalid one, okay, let's try the next one, ant, aunt, that works, they're just two variables, int minus double. Uh, double is a reserved word, or reserve term, uh, we're not allowed to use those ones, right? Uh, do not use reserve words like double char int do float, so that's invalid. Let's see if the next ones are right, three times three minus X, yep, chars divided by B minus C, yep, that's, that's valid, so, uh, this is invalid. Okay, negatives, yeah.
Isn't chars like, isn't like a reserve word, or like, is it just char reserved?
I think just char, just char is reserved, I don't think char is, is a reserved word.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so negative X minus Z minus forty-four, open, close, close, that's already invalid. Uh, let's check the rest of them, though, A, uh, scanf, I think you are able to name a variable scanf, even though, so it's not technically a reserved word. Uh, let's try it.
You're not allowed, you're not allowed.
No, it's, I don't think it's reserved, because it's not part of standard.
It says rule four.
Uh, I, but, I think I am act, I, yes, I think, I think I can actually do it. Uh, sorry, let me, uh, I didn't. Uh, what, sorry, what, sorry, what was that?
scanf is already a function, right, so you. You can't have it with, um, the include standard I O as a function in that.
So then, so you're saying now it won't, because it's working as a variable right here, I'm using it as a variable. Um, but it probably won't work as a function now, or something.
In my notes, it says scanf cannot be used.
The thing is, the thing is, is that these two, these first three rules are hard rules, those will, the program will not run if you break these rules, the last two rules are not hard rules, they are soft rules, the program will run if you use, if you break these rules. So, you can't use double char int, do float if whatever, but you can use things like printf scanf, and my headphones died, so I'm gonna plug them in, but you can use things like printf scanf and all those things, and separately, you can also, um, use all caps for macros, like, the program will still run. It's just that you're gonna have some problems, and I hope the recording doesn't screw up now. Oh boy, let's see what happens. So. Give me one second, guys, I gotta, uh, I guess auto. Let's see if I can get this working, could someone say something, oh, I think someone is talking. Okay, I can hear now. Can someone say something, just make sure, but I heard someone's voice for a second. Yes, we're good, I can hear again, uh, I don't have noise cancelling anymore, so I can hear myself a lot louder, but, it's okay, and am I being recorded, yes, I am, and can someone say something? Voice, voices, voice is not in the recording as of yet. Still no, I hear you, but it's not in the recording, that's the problem. One more time, oh, yes, we're good now, we're in the recording.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, yeah, so you see, the program still runs, I named it scanf and the program still runs, it is the variable, and it gives me the same output. So, you see, those are, oh, audio's through my speakers now, why is, okay, I'm, I'm not gonna touch anything. Um, so, yeah, you can see that the program still runs, so again, these are soft rules, the program will still run if you break these rules, these are hard rules, program will not run if you break those rules. So what that means for the question. Is that this is still valid, scanf can be a variable. Someone's got big echo.
Someone mute, please.
Okay, I think we're good. Hello, hello? Okay, I don't know, we'll see, there, there you go, now it's done, um, thank you, Madma, so, um, so, H, so the next one is, so that, this is, this is still valid, like, we're still good with this one. HA minus P modulus twenty-four, that's also good, um, nothing could be wrong with that one. X A A B plus negative seventy-seven, also good, um, so this is the only invalid one, because, um, the, um, uh, incorrect opening and closing of brackets there. Okay, P over Q over E, I'm pretty sure that's still good, I think. Seems okay to me. It would just do P over Q.
It reads, yeah, it reads left to right, if it's the same precedence.
So, yeah, P over Q, and then that answer over E. Um, PX plus ZZ over five CCC, here we have a problem, five CCC, um, that can't be a variable, there's no variable named five CCC. Um, and, uh, if there was a multiplication symbol here, that would be okay, but this is invalid. That's invalid. O minus O minus four times P is fine, negative six plus, yep, that's fine, so they're all fine, other than that. Um. Any questions about this?
Sorry, I'm, uh, testing if they muted or not.
Yeah, it's okay, don't worry, don't worry. Twelve B, this one here? Yeah, so, uh, the problem is, is that, well, what's it trying to do, okay, P, PX is a variable, it's fine, whatever, it's, it's a variable, has some sort of number, ZZ is also a variable, it has some sort of number. What is it being divided by, it's being divided by five CCC. So, this is either a number or a variable, so five CCC, it can't be a variable, because, um, variables can't start with numbers. So there's no variable that has an identifier five CCC, but it's also not a number, five CCC is, is just not a number, so you can't divide by it nicely. So, um, it's, this just doesn't, this just is nothing, you're dividing by nothing that makes sense here, so it's just invalid. If, for example, this was five times CCC, that would be okay, because you're dividing by five. But five CCC is a variable named five CCC, that's the only thing it could mean, and you can't have a variable named five CCC, so it's nothing. Good with that one? Okay?
Yeah.
Makes sense, okay. Um. So next one, uh, P times Q times negative R, pretty sure that's okay, A modulus B modulus C, pretty sure that's okay, two times X plus C, uh, X plus Y, pretty sure that's okay. Modulus D plus five. Is invalid. Because modulus, modulus is, uh, the binary operator, pretty sure, so it needs two, I don't, I don't know what kind of definition. Nothing modulus D would be, so seems invalid to me. Okay, next one, uh, RBC four over four forty, yep, RBC four is just some variable, uh, four forty is a number. Capital D double nine, um, is, um.
Okay, is Nick, is that?
Because it's capital D, yes, exactly, I'm pretty sure that's okay, maybe we'll test that and see if it works. Z O Z minus A plus A modulus A, uh, can you do A modulus A, yes, you can do A modulus A, it's just zero.
Can you do, can you do much, number, modulus number of anything, like, it's, doesn't matter?
Yeah, there's no restrictions, I don't, I don't think, I was just thinking for a second, is there a restriction, no, there's no restrictions. Um, this one seems valid to me too, they all seem valid to me in this case, so I'd say all are valid.
All right, go and test the double one or no?
Uh, double, yeah, sure, let's test the double one, so I'll just call this double. Looks like it's gonna work. Yep, it compiled and it ran, so we're good. Um. So, let's see, the next one here, we have, uh, Z minus thirty-three over Z plus forty, four, four point three. Someone's gotta mute their mic again. Um, so, uh. Okay, uh, P star, sorry, first of all, this one, this one's good, it looks good to me at least, let me actually check that again, Z minus, that'll evaluate, that's fine, yep, that looks good to me. P star star two over I over KJ. So, star star means power to me. I don't think that's actually how it works in C, so I think this is an invalid. Um, I'll try it, maybe, I'm pretty sure that's invalid, this looks valid, this looks valid, yeah, so that looks invalid to me, let's try it, maybe, I think star star just doesn't, isn't how you do it in C, it's just not. Like, you just.
Isn't star a special character, like, that you can't have special characters in variables?
Yeah, you, well, even if it wasn't a variable, even if it's like, uh, it could be an operation, I'm pretty sure operation, like, in, I mean, pretty sure operation, I'm pretty sure in, um, double, in some languages. I seem to remember that being to the power of, but I think that doesn't do that, it just doesn't do it here, yeah, exactly. So the star star just isn't defined, but star is defined, right, but star star is not defined. So, um, if I go back to here. So that's an, um, that's a invalid expression, so there we go, there's our answers for what's valid, what's invalid, this one was the invalid one here. And for the others.
Oh, just curious, could, uh, two be a pointer?
Uh, could two be a pointer? Um, no, I don't think two could be a pointer, but if we were up here, I mean, Q could be a pointer. Q could be a pointer there.
Didn't the question mention pointers in the? Like, the top description?
You're right, let's see. Assume all variables are integer or pointers to integers. Oh, but, 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 I think it's, is it, isn't it ambiguous here, we don't know if this is referring to a pointer, Q or times Q? So I'm not actually really sure.
Yeah, either way, like, either way, it's. Kind of, uh, makes sense, oh wait, why is there is a pointer again, is, like, I can't, no, I don't.
What'd you say, sorry, what, what was it?
Why is that, is a pointer again, is it like when you do like for file and stuff, or like?
Essentially, what it is, is that whenever you have a variable, like, if I define some variable, int A equals zero, there. What's happening is that somewhere in your computer, there is a certain spot of memory that's, you know, dedicated now, while the program is running, to store the information that is, what is integer A. Right, and so that has an address, right, it, it has an address, uh, which, which is not the value of the function, uh, which is not the value of the, um. Variable, or the name of the variable, it's a completely separate thing called the address of the variable, I'm pretty sure you access it by doing ampersand A, uh, and that's the address of variable A. So if I try to print that, let's say here, I'm trying to print, um, uh, I'm trying to print ampersand A. Or ampersand double, right, and I run that, didn't like it, uh, because it's a, it's a integer. Still didn't like it. Um. Maybe I can't, maybe I can't do that.
What, so like for the computer, the pointer is like something like a kegger or something?
Yeah, uh, let me see if this works, insert.
Where's, is it, well, is that pointer like, kind of like a link, but for a computer?
Program's still open in the background. Do you have the console?
Oh, yeah, 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 let me just do this, hold on, let me just check if that works, no, I do have the console open. Still didn't like it, I wonder why I'm not allowed to do that, uh, ampers, I mean, uh, semicolon, still doesn't like it, um. Assignment to int from int star makes integer from pointer without a cast. So, makes integer from pointer, so do I typecast it to?
Did you do star?
No.
It's a pointer, so you have to do star answer, like.
Up here?
Yeah.
You can only store an address in a pointer.
Can only store an address in a pointer, so now I can. Still call the star here, though, still call that star. Oops. Fit, compilation finished successfully, oh, it is working, yeah, there you go, okay, now it's working, I don't know why it still has a problem, but whatever, don't worry, like, it's whatever. So there you go, that's the address where the ver, va, value double is stored, right, so yeah, so a pointer variable is a specific variable, that you can name something else, you can name it whatever you want, and its only job is to store the, uh, yeah, yes, I am. Um, and, uh, so. Its only job is to store the address of another variable, again, you can name it anything you want, I named it answer here, um, and it stores the address of another variable, and so I don't think I have to typecast it to it.
Ah, so just for memory, that's pretty much it.
Because you put pointer in front of answer, though, in that, wouldn't it be, you're, aren't you saying that the value inside answer is now the address?
Um, yeah, that kind of makes sense, so what if I did this? Uh, still says compilation finished successfully and it still points a different.
So the address of answer is.
No, no, the.
Same thing as the value in answer.
Uh, yeah, I guess so, okay, so, so, yeah, 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 so in this case here, let's, let's, let's actually use the exact numbers that I, I got from my answer, so look here. I have a variable, I'm gonna make it less confusing, I just call it A, so that we're not confused, what's happening? Um, nope, F nine, F five, okay, so right now I have a variable A, sorry, variable A, and I have a pointer called answer. The pointer answer points to the address of A, that's what this is saying here, point, so point, pointer. Answer points to the address, addresses to these, I can't spell, of A, okay, so, the, this is, so it points to there, right? So. No, hold on. Pointer answer equals address A. So.
Was I put a pointer before answer in that line?
Um, if I don't, if I.
If you remove the pointer, it just prints the address of answer.
If I don't do it, I think it won't run. Oh no, it won't run, no, I, but I, and I get something else, what do I get, do I just get? Answer is a pointer.
You get. Of A.
I get the address of A?
Yeah. Because you just assigned the address of A, A to the, to answer, right?
Oh, but pointer would actually send the value of the address of A to the pointer, to answer.
What's the confusion?
What am I, what am I getting, what am I getting here, address of what?
Address of A, pretty sure.
Yeah, the address.
And when I.
That's what you assign.
When I do this.
It'll give you the value of A.
Is that the same number, I can't tell if that was the same number?
Okay, it's the same.
So, why is that the same, and why does it run in both cases?
Because you have to print, um, star answer.
Um.
Um, well, it might be because you ran the program before with the star, so it's like storing that, and then, you know, like, when it fails to compile.
Do you?
No, but it, it says compilation finished successfully.
Wait, Adam, do you want the value of A to print when you print answer, is that what you want?
We're not, I, I don't really want anything right now, but yeah, how would I do that, how would I, how would I get that?
Just put a star in front of A and S in the printf statement.
So what that's saying is, is what is answer pointing to?
Remove the star from the other one as well.
Here?
Yeah, you don't need that star, somehow yours works with that star, when you do it, answer equals ampersand, you're not supposed to put a star there, but yeah. So when you put a star in the printer statement, all, all it tells the program is that you want the value of the pointed variable.
Value of what, of what the pointer is pointing to, and we know it's a pointer, because I defined it as a pointer up here.
Yeah, you put a star in front of it, yeah.
So, when I get this, if I, if I just print answer. Um, this is the address of A, okay, sure, what is the address of answer?
Um, Adam?
Yes.
I remember the photo I sent yesterday.
I do, we had, we had a similar conversation. I do. We had, we had a similar conversation yesterday. Didn't we? Let's see.
If you want the address of the pointer, all you have to do.
Sorry, if address of the pointer, what, what was it?
All you have to do is just put an ampersand in front of the pointer name.
Um, ampersand in front of the pointer.
Yeah, I hear. Yeah, just put ampers in S and.
Uh, hold on, I didn't compile it. Sorry, I didn't. Uh, same number.
It shouldn't be the same number though.
I know, I know. It says compilation finished successfully. So it, the pointers are really weird to me like that. I don't know. It's like it never works how I expect it to work. Um. Um.
You know that picture that you just showed?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, wait, what was that?
This here? This here?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, so Maya sent it to me yesterday. Um, it's. Uh, just something, so like it's essentially the idea of what's happening here is that. We have X is a variable, right? It is a box that contains the number twenty-two, if we just assign it to twenty-two, right? So, um. The address of A, of, of X, sorry, is a thousand and two, right?
So that's the address?
That's the address of X, right?
And the address of X, because like, how would that look like in a code? How do you just assign that text?
Well, you don't know, this is just your, your computer decides this, this number. Your computer decides this number, right? You don't decide a thousand two. That's the address of where the information is stored. Your computer has a complicated system of where, how it stores information, so.
Yeah, also it's not really like, right, to you, like it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter what the address is. It's just some number. P is a variable that's a pointer variable, right? It has an address as well. All it does is it points to this address. It doesn't contain anything. It contains a point to this address. It doesn't contain its own value.
Yeah.
But it does have its own address. Right? It does have its own address. So, uh, I'm trying to get the address of the pointer now. That's what I'm trying to do. So to get the address of the pointer.
So you want the address of answer or like A and S and?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
Well, I just did it on REPL and it worked for me.
Mm-hmm. Are, are, are we sure these are different numbers or the address is just next to each other? I mean, it seems unlikely, but. I, I.
Do you have to int some star answers and it just int answer and then you could?
Uh, you have to do star answer because that is a pointer.
Well.
You can only assign, you can only assign. So right now we're assigning an address to a variable. You can only assign the address to the variable if it's a pointer.
If you've already declared a pointer before.
If I get rid of that, I, it shouldn't compile. Oh no, it did compile.
That has some sense, so try and see.
And I get, and I get this. It says compilation finished successfully. It, I know it gives me a bunch of errors, but it says compilation finished successfully.
Take the address of A, it's just an integer, right? And the address is just an integer too, so it will store the address of A.
Add a printf to your code that also just prints ampersand A and then just compare if they're exactly the same.
Oh, and print ampersand A? Okay, can I, does Ctrl D work? Yes, it does. Ampersand A.
Cause maybe we're just like thinking it's the same, but it's not.
Uh, let me new line, new lineup.
Wait, if you're saying answer is equal to the directory.
They're not the same.
They're not the same. Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, middle, yeah.
If you're saying ends is equal to the, what do you call it?
Address.
What do you guys call it? The address? Yeah, of A. And you're printing the address of ants, then it's not the same address.
Yeah, it won't be the same.
Of answer, which is gonna be equal to the address of A. So you should probably, no, 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 it's just the.
Yeah.
The ampersand, the ampersand of ants in the printf, take that out.
No, I'll just switch it to, I'll switch it to star of answer. And then that should give me. It compiled. Oh no, it failed, it failed to compile. Why did it fail to compile?
It's not a pointer.
It's not a pointer. So, yeah, it's not a pointer actually, so why would it, why would it do that? It did compile now and I got five. Okay, so, what's happening here? Which is essentially what, uh, this is saying here. So.
Wait, can we explain that, uh, picture or whatever with this or something?
Yeah, it's really, it's exactly this. It's just with a little bit more code that's here. So, right, so if, if, let me take a screenshot. So, what's happening is, right when we begin this program, sorry, C, C doesn't do anything. Uh, let me, I just, C, C doesn't, there's no C here. Forget about C. So what's happening is, right at the start, I'm declaring, there is a box, okay, that contains the number five. Let's call that box A. Okay, it has some address, right, which I'll call, uh, it has some address. Let's just say address, add, rest, right? So. It has some address. Then I'm declaring another box. Okay, which I'm calling answer, star answer, technically. It also has some address. Right? And all it contains. Is the address of this thing, of this other. Variable. That's all it contains. So, when I print, when I print the address of answer. I get this value. When I perc- uh, when I, when I, um. Print the address of A, I get that value. When I pr- print the pointer answer, I get what is it pointing to? I get five. And I should actually do, what happens if I just print? Answer. I should also get the address of A. Let's see, I'm gonna put that. So does this make sense right now, what I just explained there?
Wait, I have a question about this.
Yeah.
So you said that the pointer, uh, points to the address of it?
The pointer points to the address, yeah.
So how come, uh, it's the, we did star answer, then how come it's printing the five and not the address?
Star answer? Star answer is, um, star answer, so I guess this is answer. Because star, I don't, I'm, I'm a little iffy about that. I don't know if this should be called star answer or answer, but when you say star answer, you're asking what is answer pointing to? It's pointing to five.
So it's not pointing to the address of it?
What is, no, no, what is the value stored at the address that it's pointing to?
Oh, okay.
What is the value stored at the address that it's pointing to? That's probably, that's a better way to say it. Um, I wanna, I wanna print answer and see if that. So just print, so I should get the same thing twice here. Compile, compile, uh, I mean, compile, compile and run. Yes, it works. We're all good. So I get the address of answer, which is my pointer variable. I get the address of A. I get answer, which is the address of A, so it's no surprise that these two numbers are the same. And then I get the value stored at answer.
Wait, so, um. So, the address of answer is the first one. Um, and that's the, uh, you know how there was the two boxes? The below the box of answer, the address? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's what that first number is, right?
This one here?
Yeah, and then the second number is the, uh, address below five?
Uh, yep, yep, that's this one here.
Alright, and the third one, oh, what's that?
Third one is what's the value of answer. But remember, answer is storing the address of five, or address of A, I mean, sorry, address of A, which is the same number. In both cases, I'm just printing the address of A. So in the first one, I'm explicitly saying I want the address of A, address of A. Then, so remember, there's a, there's a line of code added here. This is, this is, there's another line of code in here. Um, which is this one. I wanna just print answer. So you know what I, I should, well, I'll leave it. I just wanna print answer. Answer is a pointer variable that points to the address of A. Right?
Oh, so also prints the address of it?
So exactly, it just prints the same number again because it's also the address of A.
And then star answer, uh, uh, points to what the address of A has, which is five?
It, it, star answer, yeah, it, it, it's, it's evaluates to what is stored at the address that it's pointing to.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, yeah. Okay, so, um. There's that. Let me see if there's anybody else that someone sent me a question. Okay, we're good. Um. So. Go back to this over here. Okay. So any more questions about these pointer variables? I don't really have a good example of like a question using them. Um. So it's kind of, just kind of like trying to understand them like this. But.
Think of, um, think of a desktop shortcut, if, if people understand that better.
Mm-hmm.
Like it points to a place in your computer, but it's not the actual program. It just says, hey, this program's over here.
And it itself is some amount of code. There, it is a thing itself, right? So it's not just a name, it has some code to it, it's a shortcut. But again, yeah, it's not the actual thing.
Um, yo, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So by the way, um, like, you said that star answer means when, um, thing. Hold on, I'm tripping. Oh, wait, when star answer means, it points to the value that the address of A has, right?
It, it evaluates to the av- the, the, the value that is stored at the address, yeah.
Five in this case.
Yeah.
But, um, so how come we say, like, when there's a pointer, how come we say, oh, it points to the address of it? Instead of it points to the other, the, the, inside the box?
How, like, i- if we wanted to read the actual address instead of the value?
No, I'm saying like, how come when there's pointers, we say, oh, it points to the address of it?
Because the pointer does. See, like the, the, the pointer as a variable, right? If I were to print answer, it would give me the address of A. Just, uh, just answer.
Okay.
Right? If I were to print that, and, and it does, it does give me the address of A, right? But. It, if I print star answer, it's asking, it's really saying, okay, uh, answer has an address of A, what's stored at that address?
Oh, alright.
What is the value of A?
Okay, yeah, I get it. Alright, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Yeah.
Important note from last class probably is also that your pointer, the, the type of variable your pointer is, has to be the same as the type of variable you're gonna store in it.
Yeah.
Cause it needs to know how much it's storing.
How much, yeah, yeah.
Wait, what does that mean? Oh, you mean like both of them have to be int?
I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't say double.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or.
Alright.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. Okay, so there's pointers and stuff. Any more questions? If not, I'll move on, but let me know. Um. File. Let me see. Hmm. Um, okay, I have, I have an example problem, which we could do, which would take. Um. Functions. Or I could also go to, um, I could also go to my professor's lectures. She did some kind of example problems. She didn't really put prompts though, and I like prompts. I don't wanna just see the code and then try to copy it. Um, but maybe that would also be something interesting to do. What was the, no, midterm review was just. Oh yeah, hold on, someone said at the end of midterm review, there was something. So. What, what is there? Calculate the sum of two integers using a function, that's too easy. Void function is too easy. I guess I should just quickly mention void functions. Um, I can define a void function up here. That, so, okay, again, if I wanted to find like a function that, uh, you know, does something. It doesn't actually always have to return something. It could just return void. So if I say void, uh, the example that they'd use is stars. Um, it takes, uh, no input, right? It takes no input and it has no output. Uh, so you just do this, stars, and then, uh, it still can do something though. You can still call it and it can still do something. So the example that they use, the reason they call it stars is because, uh, you can say print, printf. Uh, star, star, star. And if I call it in the middle of the function, let's just say here, I just say stars. Uh, and call the function, I can compile, and it'll just put a bunch of stars in the middle of my thing. Okay, so that's just the example of a void function. So a void function returns nothing. It could have an input, right? It doesn't really matter. It could have an input. Um. But the main idea here is that void functions have no output, and also that functions are allowed to have no inputs as well. Um, but, yeah. Okay.
Wait, you don't put any return statements in the void function, right?
You don't, cause it returns, I guess you could say return void. No, could you say return void? Uh, compilation failed. So no, you cannot say that. It's a void function, so there is no return statement, I guess.
So you only use it when you don't need any value returned to the main function?
Uh, yeah, exactly. If it just wanted to do one thing, like draw three stars. Right? Okay, so it's a new line, new line. If I wanted to just like do that, then, there you go. Right?
Alright, thanks.
No problem.
Multiple, multi- multiple returning functions aren't in.
They are not in the test.
They return multiple.
My professor told me they are not in the test. I've heard people say, I don't know if I've heard people, people say, ah. Sorry. I, I, I don't know if I've heard people say otherwise.
I think you're gonna pass the COVID test, bro.
You think I'm gonna pass? Yeah. Yeah, well, I, one test, this test I do not wanna pass. Um, which is, yes.
It's fine, I'm, I'm sure you'll be fine. Best of luck.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
You hello?
Hello, yes.
Um, you know how you put stars in the empty brackets, right?
Uh-huh.
Well, what if you did put like an input inside it?
Just like that?
Um.
Still run. Oh, actually, it failed because I didn't use the variable. Um.
Oh.
Hold on, C is not.
So what kind of input will go in there?
Um, oh, actually it failed. Yeah, so if I put int A, that means it's expecting one integer A. So I can't call it like this. I have to put something in it. And now it'll, it'll run. But it's not doing anything with the integer.
Yeah.
But I, I, it's still, but I have to, I have to put that in he, in the call. Right?
Okay, alright. Alright, thanks.
No problem, no problem. So, let's see. Let's see, um. Yeah, that's everything from the midterm review. The rest of the function stuff is just like very, very simple. So, does anybody have any more like, they want me to show an example using this? No, yes, no, okay. Take that as a no. Um, so. Then I guess I'm just gonna look at more prompts and I'll just do the things from prompts. Cause I guess actually, no, I have more midterms, but they all. Okay, let's look at the midterms, I guess. Let's look at the midterms. So twenty, this, I did this one already, right? Write a program that prints out the two smallest numbers. Um, yes, I did this yesterday, I'm pretty sure. Yes, I did that yesterday. Um, I did that, yeah, yeah, I did this, this one yesterday. Twenty fifteen. Um, uh, considering it was already open, looks like I did this one yesterday, but maybe I didn't. What is this? Data dot T X C, exactly eight numbers. Write a C program that reads in each number, indicates its category in parentheses, positive, even, positive, odd, positive, negative, negative, odd. Write a sentence at the end to indicate the end of file has been reached. All the data has been processed. This must be the last statement in your program. The file contains no zero values. The reading of the numbers from the file must be done inside a loop. The only loop statement allowed in this program is a single for statement. Your file should contain and display. Okay, should we try this one? Doesn't look too hard. So, let's give it a try. Um. We'll see how long this takes and probably take another break after it. So, let's see. Here. Um. So. Um, I'm lost. Here, this is the question. We're gonna take in a file, so file, file, uh, star in, we're gonna take in a file. It, I'm gonna open that file, F, open. It, I'm gonna open that file. F open in uh nope, sorry, F open uh it's gonna be data dot T X T. And I'm gonna open it as a read. Then I want to um scan each one. So I'm only allowed one for loop. So I better start it. Yeah, okay, I see how we're gonna. So for uh we don't actually need, we don't, okay, so I'll say I'll say int int I equals one. The condition that has to be met, that has to be true is that we're not F E O F at the end of file of in. Then I need to uh but we're not even doing anything with I though, so I don't even think that matters. We just have to not be at the end. Yeah. I I'm gonna open the window quickly. Hold on, it's hot here.
It's cuz he's in there.
Max, max. Yo, do you have to put the in I equals one inside of the for or can you like put that outside?
Um, sorry, was there a question there? I didn't hear?
Oh yeah, I was saying, do you have to put the int I equals one inside of the for? Uh or can you like put that outside?
Could I say int I and then I equals one?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, yes.
Alright. Or like, could you just try to be like into I equals one all on the outside?
Um, hmm, yeah. I think that would work. I think that would.
Alright. I would say something.
Yeah, no problem. So for just recounting until we're not at the end, until we're, no, 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 until we while this is, if this is true, yeah. We need to take in a number and then decide what kind of number it is. So scanf. Oh, no, no, there's eight numbers. We know there's eight numbers. So why would we need um print a sentence at the end indicate the end of file has been reached? We know there's eight numbers, so we don't need to deal with any of this. Um, I is less than or equal to eight. So yeah, that's it. So we're gonna scan uh uh f scanf. From in, I'm gonna take in a integer. Should open the actual file here. I'm gonna take in an integer, yep, and I want to assign it to um uh input, I guess. And I'm going to say um input. Then I have to do a bunch of things here. So uh I have to say if so I have to decide if it's a positive, odd, positive, even, negative, odd, negative, even. So first of all, let's just see, is it even or odd? Well, no, let's let's uh let's say, is it positive or negative? So is if input is greater than or equal to zero, or actually it said no zero, so if it's greater than zero, um then it's positive uh and we do something. Otherwise, well, otherwise it's just not positive, so it must be negative and we do something else. So what do we do if it's positive? If it's positive, we have to check if it's even. So is it even? To check if it's even, we just take the input modulus modulus two or no uh yeah, modulus two. And we're just gonna check if that's zero. There's no remainder when you divide it by two. That's by definition even. Um, and then we just say, okay, well, if it's positive and even, then we just printf. The uh no, we just wanna percent percent D uh and it's a positive even number. And I can't use brackets like that. How do I use brackets inside of a printf? Does anybody know? Do I use a percent sign? No. Slash? Star? How do I use brackets like that? Oh, double. Nope. Is that right? Double? No, that's not good.
Does anyone backslash?
Backslash? Nope, doesn't like it. Or is that forward slash? No, that's forward slash. No, it doesn't like it.
Do you like brackets?
You don't really, I don't need it. No, I don't need it. But I'd just like to know, how do I put brackets inside of a printf?
Okay.
Anyways, um so yeah, if it's divisible, so we know it's positive. If it's divisible by two, then you say it's a positive and if it's not, uh nope, we don't wanna control everything. Is there a hot key for select the line? Oh, uh positive odd. So uh that's all we care about. Okay, so that's the that's the positive, even and odd ones dealt with. Now negative, we know it's negative, so we essentially just do the same thing. But since we know it's negative, we just switch that out to negative. Um, and I don't know. Seems like it'll work to me. Compile, uh question whatever, uh save. Uh gave me a bunch of errors, but it did compile. Percent D, oh, I didn't assign, give it a didn't give it anything. Input. Ah, come on, input. Yeah. Input, compile, compilation finished successfully. It didn't use I. Yeah, I never gets used. It's just a counter. Um, it it won't run though. There's no thing and I also have to put new line.
Wait, what's the issue for that?
What's, sorry, what was that?
Like, what's his issue with I?
Uh I is not used at all. I never used the letter I. The letter I is just used, the variable I is, it's just used as a counter. So it doesn't really have a problem. I think if I, I think if I didn't use this, if I if I actually said, if I said, and I use the int I equals uh um I should say one, one? If I use that here, it'll just compile normally, cause it knows that I is just the counter.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, thank you.
So it doesn't matter. Okay, let's um if I run this, it'll just, it'll be nothing, cause I don't have any data. Right? Uh so the new lines should be at the end, whatever. I'm not gonna edit it. So in the file that has this, it is study hall and it is data dot T X T. So I'll make a new text document, data dot T X T. And I will input the numbers that they said, which is um eight, two, negative six, nine, negative two, six, negative seven, three. Save that. And uh I don't think I have to actually compile, but there you go. Positive, even, positive, even, negative, even, positive, odd, negative, even, positive, even, negative, odd, positive, odd. We're good. Okay, there is that question.
Um, you for the counter, is it just like it just uh goes through the um text file? Just keeps going through it?
Yeah, it goes eight times, cause I the the file, the question says, we know there's eight integers. So I just have to count from one to eight.
Alright, how does that work though? It like uh goes over the lines, like eight lines or something?
How does like, well, the for loop is saying when you start it, it says, okay, so start I at one.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying like when like inside what's what's inside the for loop. Like this might be like a really dumb question.
No, no, it is.
Alright, so what it does is, I'm just asking is like, so since you uh since you said I is less than equal to eight, so you know how this is all happening in the text file? What the for loop saying? So is it basically like in the te- uh text file, it's like it starts at line one and then it goes up to line eight, like?
Um, essentially, yeah, because because this is the first scan. This is the first scan. So how many times do we scan? We scan eight times.
Okay, cuz I was wondering what happened if people like I equals zero?
It would scan nine times. It would scan nine times, because it would do zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And I would get an error, well, I wouldn't get an error, but I'd get a a the last digit. Oh, it just wouldn't even scan it, cause there's nothing there on the last one. There's just, there's just no, no thing. Um, kind of, no, no, it failed. No, no, it didn't fail. Never mind. Sorry, sorry, jumping ahead. So.
Hey, could you show the text file real quick?
Uh, the text file that I uh yeah, that this program is reading? There you go.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, okay.
Good.
Wait, if you wanted to read it the same number of times, uh like the I would be less than eight, uh less than eight, right? Not just less than or equal to eight? If we were to say I is equal to zero and start from zero?
Yes, yes, you would say less than. But I'm I'm actually surprised this just works. And it doesn't give me an error. I don't really understand why. Um. I don't understand why at all. Uh, oh, no, no, it reads the last one twice. There you go. It reads the last one twice. That's why it's doing it. So the last, it doesn't get it, it can't scan another number, so it just uses the last one and does the same thing. So I get the same result. There, that's why. So yeah, so if I make this just less than and not less than or equal to, I will get just one three P O. Positive odd at the bottom.
Oh, if you wanted to um make the whole thing happen twice, then would you say sixteen?
Um, uh well, if I just put sixteen in here, it won't go twice. It'll just have three P O at the end a bunch of times. Because it doesn't have more things to scan. So I don't really know how you would reset it to go back to the start of the uh the start of the document. I don't, I did, maybe someone knows. I don't know.
No, I was just wondering if that's like a thing or something.
It it probably is, that we can say go back to the start of the data. Um, I don't know what it is though. I don't know what how to do.
No, it's so good though, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, guys, let's take another ten minute break. I'm sorry I'm taking a bunch of time breaks, but I think I I need it right now. So another break and then I will go and I know it says nine o'clock on the bottom, but I'll go till nine thirty. And then uh so we'll answer a couple more questions for another half hour after. So yes, let's take a, let's take another break. Uh, this is going to be until uh let's say nine o'clock and then we will have another nice exact half hour, two hour session. Okay, so back in about eleven minutes.
You
You You You
Yo, hello?
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm back. Let's finish up today. There I am. Hello. Okay, um, I just was scratching my nose, that's why it's red. I just. Thought it would look like that and like I didn't think it would see in the camera, but anyways, so um, someone's got. Everybody could, yeah, okay, there we go, thank you. So let's finish up today. I mean, let's like do a quick little like make sure we got everything that I think is in the test. So let's um, let's make a little list here, right? So. So, uh, what's everything we went over? Well, okay, we went over functions, define a user. User defined functions, we get went over um, uh, well, we did, we did some practice with if statements, so if. Statements, we did uh one switch statements, so I'll say switch. State, statement. Um, we did uh for loop. And while loop. Okay, we did uh F E O F, which is something I definitely wanted to touch on. Uh, we did, we worked on pointers, uh, expressions. Right, uh, we worked on um. Um, that might be it. I can't think of anything else. Uh, technically math dot H. And. That's about it. Is that everything that's on the test? Is there anything I'm missing that is on the test that I did not cover? Does anybody know anything?
How about functions?
Functions as in like other, like what, how, not user defined functions? Or what do you mean? I think that falls under user defined functions, these one, these ones here. So like things that we define at the start, I think, I think that's what you mean. So that would be that, yeah, but I could do more, I could do more examples of it. I guess I'll continue with some prompts. What was this prompt here? Oh, this was from a midterm. Let's check that midterm. Is this the midterm? No, different one. Uh, not that one either, not that one either. This one, let's see if there's another one. So that one was okay. Uh, did we do this one? Hello, yeah.
Oh, I just want to ask, how long does it take to study the uh, the like file in and out thing?
Uh, how long or?
Yeah, you you like uh mad complex or something or no?
No, no, they're like doing this, doing this, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you essentially, this is all you need. You need to say that, so essentially what we're saying here is that in. In is a variable that is a file type variable, right? And it's a, I mean, we don't have to think about it too hard, but it's file like in is I'm I'm calling it in, that's my choice. Uh, it's a file type, right?
Yeah.
Uh, in specifically which file is it? It's data dot T X T as a read file. Right, specifically, and that's it. And then I just go in when I do my F scan F, which is for files, file scan F. I just define what what's what variable holds the um, holds the uh. Document, the data document that I'm that I want, which which I've defined specifically as data dot T X T, so I put that here. And then it's kind of just the same as a scan F after that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Uh, similarly, you can also write to a, a. A file which you'd put this as W and then you'd say F print F. Um, and uh, it would be the same as a print F, it's just that at the start you have to decide to say, if the, to have to say. Um, which file you're talking about, which is stored in the variable in.
Alright, and um, you know that and input that you added?
Uh, what, sorry, this here, this into input?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That to do with the file?
Uh, it's to do with, I'm gonna get an integer out of the file, so whatever I get out of the file. Put it, store it temporarily in the variable input, which is an integer.
Oh, so, oh wait, so that's what the scanner is for, so it's um, the file in and then percent D. Yeah, like for the integer, which you called input.
Yep.
Okay, and how about if you said like uh percent L F and you called input a double, then what would happen? Would it like? Oh, but like, would it look for a double or would it just change all the integers to decimal numbers?
Oh, that's, yeah, let's, let's try, I don't know.
Alright, bet.
L F. Completion failed. Is it for a different reason or is it because it doesn't like what I did? Hold on, let me check quickly that I didn't break anything while I was typing that. Does this execute? That does, okay, so it just doesn't like it. I guess it.
Maybe because there's no double in the actual file?
I guess so. I guess they're all integers, so that's it. Yeah, it 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 just has to be an integer, because they're all integers.
I bet, I think.
So, okay, um. So I guess I will do, I guess I'll look at another uh. Midterm and see if there's any nicer questions that we can do from it. I'll look at twenty fourteen, I guess. This is twenty fourteen. So any other questions from here? Nope, end of test. Um, and we did that one and we, did we do this one? We did not do this one. Write a complete program that calculates the final grade in a course. Ask the user to enter four marks, midterm, final exam, projects and labs. All marks are out of a hundred. Calculate the average of the two tests, calculate the average of the labs and projects. The final grade is to be calculated like this. If the test slash exam grade is below fifty percent or the labs and projects average is below fifty. Uh, given F, if both averages are below fifty, take the lower of the two averages and apply the following grade conversion scale. A equals eighty to one hundred, oh sorry, if both are above fifty percent, A is eighty to one hundred, yada yada, we have more there. Print out the final grade, letter. I I don't really have any other questions, so I'll just do it unless unless someone has a better question, but I'll uh, I'll just go for it. So. Maybe everybody, if you wanna uh, take a screenshot or something, because I won't have it up on the screen. I lost it. If you want to take a screenshot, so you can follow along as I'm typing, you can see what, why I'm doing what I'm typing, so to give, give a one second here. Okay, okay, and uh, so yeah, so I'm gonna open this. Okay, so in genie now. I'll open a new C file. So, we want. We want to take in four marks, midterm, final exam, projects and labs. You know what, I'll do this with functions. Because I wanna define more functions, so I'll do this with some functions too, uh, just to make it more interesting. Um, I wanna make them, I wanna make the main file as small as possible, so we're gonna take in four marks, right? So, yeah, you know what, let's do this with a bunch of functions, more excessive amounts of functions, just so that we can see. Clearly how a function would work, so I I wanna stop. Running, why is that running already? I have a console open, that's fine, okay. So, um. So, okay, first thing that I wanna do is I want to uh, ask for four numbers from the, the user. Right, I wanna ask for four numbers. So, okay, I can't do that in the function, because I need four numbers. I can do four different functions. That'll be a little excessive, so I'll do, I'll keep that not in a function, but the rest of the stuff will be in a function. So we're gonna ask for four numbers, they're all gonna be. Uh, they're all gonna be integers. No, they're not gonna be integers, they they don't have to be integers, so they're all gonna be doubles. Um, which I'll call um, uh midterm, final, projects. And you know, I'm gonna make it a little shorter, mid, final, projects and labs. So those are all doubles. Okay, and then I'm gonna ask the user to input. These pieces of data. So they're all gonna be L Fs, right? They're gonna be L F, so input four pieces of data. And uh, so the first one is gonna be midterm, the second one is gonna be final. The third one is gonna be the projects mark and the last one is going to be the labs mark. Okay, now we know the four uh variables here. We have to do some checks. Okay, so calculate the average of the two tests. Okay, I can do that. I can say uh, test. Average equals, I'll say uh, I want a function called uh, T average, right? Uh, and so call the function and it's gonna put two numbers in, it's gonna take the midterm, it's gonna take the final. Okay? Again, I don't need a function, I'm just doing the function to be a little excessive and to write functions. Okay, so let's define that function, let's do it now. So I wanna define a function, what is it gonna return to me? It's gonna return a double. Okay, it's called T average, T A V G, right? It's gonna take in two values, right? It's gonna take in two values. What's the first value? Well, it's first value is going to be a uh, double. Double, ah, double, which I'll call in one. And the other one's gonna be a double, which I'll call um, into. And what's it gonna do? Well, it's, it's just gonna say, uh, I'm just gonna return. And I'll do everything in the return, I'll say um, return. Something divided by something, so the average is going to be the sum of the two uh, in one plus into divided by two. And we're gonna return that value and that will be the average of the two. Okay, so now we have the test average. We also need the average of the labs and projects, so. Um, I'll call it labs average, even though it it's labs and projects, but I'll call it, and so it's the L A V G. Right, labs average, and it's going to take in the projects mark and it's gonna take in the labs mark. So our function is going to be very similar to this one. Right, our other function, our, so our I A V G, right, is. Going to be, first of all, it's going to return a double. Um, it's going to be called I, um, I guess I should start a lower, it should be a lowercase I. Uh, so I A V G. Right, okay, it's gonna be called that. It's going to take in two values, it's gonna take in a double. Double, which again, I'm gonna call in one and another double, which I'm gonna call into. Can use the same variable, because uh, the variables are not transferred between functions. And I just want to return the exact same line of code from. From above. Over two, in one plus into. So that'll give me my uh, labs after, oh, that was, that was an L, that's why it looked like. Um, guy. I'll call it P average, projects average. Projects average. Right, so. Right, so P average is a function, project average is a variable that stores the output of P average. Okay, now we know the two averages, so the final grade is calculated like this. If either of the marks are below fifty. Um, or the labs averages, if either of them are below fifty, the final grade is an F. So let's just right away, put an if statement here. If something, if uh, test average. Is less than fifty, I think uh, yeah, less than fifty, or. The project average. Is less than, whoops. Less than fifty. Either of these things are true, then um, I'll say uh, final, uh, fi- um. Grade equals, I think I can, can I just say F? I'll do strings, I mean, I'll do uh, characters. So I'll define a character, which is grade. I also have to define um. Test average here. And. Project average. Okay, so if the test average or the project average is less than fifty, we get an F. Okay, otherwise, if this isn't true. As in one of them is not, or actually both of them are not um, fifties or below. Or or just they're not fifties. Then I have to find the uh, if both averages are above T fifty, take the lower of the two averages. And apply the following grade conversion scale. Okay, so it's a little bit unfair, you take the lowest, so either you take. You get higher on the tests or higher on the projects and labs, you take the lowest of them and that's your final grade. Um, so, well, we take the lower of them, so um. So, is there a nice, I mean, of course we can do with if statements. Is there a nice way to do this though, that isn't with an if statement? Um, is the min function a thing? A equals min. Uh, let's, let's just try it and let's see if it works. Test, average, I might need math dot I O, but we'll see. Um, uh, test average and uh, project average. And I'm going to say uh, print F. Uh, percent D, A, and I know I have to define A up here. So, what this essentially should do, uh, class mark. Uh, so it doesn't like it, because. Uh, so it doesn't like it, because, uh, probably because of a bunch of things, so let's see what the problem is. Um, assignment to char from char makes integer with point. Huh?
We're creating quotations instead of uh, you're supposed to just use um, I forget what it's called, but uh, yeah, that.
Single quotations?
I'm pretty sure for for chars, for characters.
Okay, uh, still doesn't like it, but yeah, that seems to fix it. Um, min, so it it doesn't like min. Uh, let's see if I put math dot.
Oh, you are, found a mistake.
Yeah, there probably are mistakes. So yes, I go for it.
Uh, so you know how you did uh percent D eight, but it's a double, you know, so you got.
Oh, yeah, that's true. LF. Okay, it still doesn't like it, but yeah, that's that's true. Um, grade is set but not used, that's fine. Compilation failed still, because min is just not a function. So what I was expecting is that min would be some sort of function that returns the smallest of the values, but that's a little bit too wishful, so that did not work. Um, so there is no A, forget about this A, does not do anything. I'll leave the math on H for now. Uh, let's define it in a function. Let's say we're gonna take a function. Um, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say min is a variable and it's going to uh minimum. Is gonna be a function that takes in our two uh scores, test. Test um average and it's also going to take in project average. So it's it's gonna take those two, uh, and in fact, I'll call it minimum two, because it takes in two um values. And it's gonna return the smallest, it's gonna return the minimum. So let's define the function. It's gonna return a double. It's called minimum two. And it's gonna take in two values. Ah, what did I do? It's gonna take in two values, both of which are doubles. So, double. In one. Double in two, good. And what is it gonna return? What's gonna return the smallest of the two? Now, we have to actually do a little bit of work here to decide what's gonna be returned. So, I'm gonna return something, I mean, I have to return something. It's gonna return answer. I'm gonna define answer as a double here. Now, I'm gonna set answer to be the smallest one. So all I have to do is just do an if statement in here. I don't, I couldn't think of a nicer way to do it, so I'll just do it like that. Um, so we just have to say, is in one greater than in two, or or I should say, or equal to technically, I have to account for it somewhere. So is in one greater than in two? If so, in two, or uh uh answer equals in two. Otherwise, that's not true, answer equals in one. And then return the answer. Okay, so there's that. We get the minimum. Now, all we have to worry about is the minimum. Now we have to just ask a bunch of if statements. Uh, is the minimum in this range? So is the minimum value um between, and I'll start with. Um, we don't have to account for F, we already know F. So. Um, we could do, let's just start with A, I guess. So uh, if that minimum value is um. I. Oh, yeah, no, no, I can start from the bottom, actually. So if I, if I say it's less than sixty, right? If minimum is less than sixty, we already know it's greater than fifty, though, right? We know it's greater than fifty, so if it's between fifty and sixty, because the fact that we're in here means that both our scores are greater than fifty. Right? Both our scores are greater than fifty. So if it's less than sixty, we know it's less than sixty, we already know it's greater than fifty. That means our our minimum grade is between fifty and sixty and our grade is an F. Sorry, our grade is a D. Right? Okay, else if. Else if is like that. Right, so uh, our next thing to check is, is minimum less than uh seventy? Right? If it is less than seventy, we already know it's greater than sixty, because it failed this test, so it's not less than sixty. So our grade is um uh, C. Okay, else if.
Uh, you.
Yep.
Are the way of doing it, wait, I think what's gonna happen is, I'm not sure, but I think it might print everything all the way from sixty to higher. So I think like if you start from the highest one, so like A, and then go down, then it'll go to the one closest. So like if you put like, oh, A, a grade equals A, and then for that if statement, it's like.
Uh, since I'm using else, since I'm using else, it's just gonna skip all of them. If I ju- if I didn't have an else here, it wouldn't skip them, it wouldn't skip, but since the else is there, it'll, the first one that it successfully runs, it'll just skip to the end of the if statement.
Oh, okay, okay, I I get it.
Um, and then if uh min is less than uh ninety, no, what? No, 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 and other, else, else. Grade equals A. And the final thing we need is a uh printf. Which is, just says, final grade is percent C, I'm pretty sure is for the char, and it's going to be great. Compile, comp- compilation failed. Min is undeclared. Uh, it is undeclared. I need to declare it up here. Um, min needs to be declared here, compilation done. So I'm gonna put in four values. I'll say I got a forty-five, a seventy-eight, a ninety, and a twelve. So final grade is D. Um, probably right, I don't know, let's see. Uh, the average of the first two is forty-five plus seventy-eight. Uh, divided by two is, I got a sixty-one percent for that one and ninety plus twelve divided by two is a fifty-one percent, because it's a fifty-one percent. So my lowest grade is a fifty-one, so yes, I should get a D. That's correct. Uh, let's say I am. Uh, a genius and I get ninety, 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 and uh, uh, eighty-nine. Final grade is an A, so I, I mean, because the average is gonna be ninety, so um, or eighty-nine point something, eighty-nine point seven five, I guess. So, yeah, we should be in the A range there. It's good. Uh, so it's good. So you see, again, it it does not, like, if I, if I got that average of fifty-one. While it's true that the v- value is less than seventy, it's less than eighty, so all this code should run. It's because of this fact that I'm using the word else here. The moment it runs into something that works, it just completely, it doesn't even check, it doesn't check these conditions. It goes to the end of the if statement, which is inside of another if statement, so it's the end, and then we run the code. And yeah, that code worked. And I did it with a bunch of functions again on purpose. I mean, you didn't have to do it with a bunch of functions, but I did it with a bunch of functions. And we didn't need math.h. Uh, compile. Yeah. Okay, um, there's that, so we got five more minutes. Any questions that I can answer or help with or anything? See, I'll open the discussion chat as well, if people wanna see. Uh, nope. Okay, uh, we can. Look at more midterm questions then. Let's see, I did, like, I I'm very bad at keeping track of what terms I did and which ones I didn't. So this is um, twenty fourteen winter, this is twenty fifteen spring, this is twenty sixteen winter, twenty fifteen. Why, technically didn't do this question, but I don't really want to, so probably won't. Um, what was this one, twenty fifteen winter? Yeah. Twenty fourteen winter, let's see. Or are there any more practice problems like here? Um, let's look at this next one, maybe. Um, maybe do you wanna, maybe let's do, what is, what will the exact output of this program be? Those are somewhat interesting. Um, let's try. Kind of comes in two parts, so let's try it out. Um, oh, that's the answer. It has the answers here? I can't tell when the question, no, the question is here. Uh, poorly formatted. Questions, okay. So there and. There's the continuation. Oh, no, that's not what I meant to take a picture of. This is, that was not supposed to be there. This is the beginning of the text, there you go. So. Um, here we go. So what will the exact output of this program be? Okay, we, and it, I hate the formatting, but we'll have to deal with it. Um, we uh initialize normally, so we have two integers, uh, one is in, one is B, which is equal to three. We have a double, which is five point O, and Y, which is another double. So for A equals one, A is less than B plus plus A. While B is greater than zero. B minus, B equals B minus A, print that. And all that, and then print something with X and Y, um, which is still in the, which is still in the for loop. And then this is outside the for loop. So the for loop is these two brackets, right? And the while loop are these two brackets. And the main function are these two brackets. Don't know why I drew that so far to the side, okay. So, the formatting really throws me off here, but let's, let's give it a try. So for A equals one, A is less than B, A plus plus, okay, let's go inside. What happens? A equals one, that's what we have right now, A equals one. What, we go inside, okay, while B is greater than zero, B equals B minus A. So, three, well, sorry, B equals three minus one, so B equals two. Okay, then we print out uh the statement, so we get, we print this, I get um. Um. Wow, what am I reading? Percent five D, okay, percent five D, so it's, it's. Why is, what does the five do? It's how many decimal? No, not how many, that's how, that's the justification on the right. So it should be, uh, the first variable is an A, so A, uh, whi- which which is, which has a value of one right now, so one. Justified five times to the right. So, one, two, three, four, five, including this space. And then on the same line, I write B justified four times. B is two, so two. Three, four. Remember, the thing counts as a space. Okay.
Uh, should the spaces be to the left?
What, sorry, what, what, sorry?
Uh, shouldn't the spaces be to the left?
Um, should they? No, I think they.
Yes, unless you have a negative, a negative sign means left in then. And no negative sign means right in then.
So I have it right, I I went to the right.
And that is in the number should be on the farthest.
Oh, okay, I just had it backwards then, I just had it backwards in my head, okay. So, yeah. There, and. Boy, that's gonna be difficult to select. Can I just select the two? Hey, good, that worked. Well, now it looks like there's a big space. Okay, there we go. So yeah, okay, so just to be clear, positive number there means your justification is to the lo- to the left, you're going to the left. Okay, I I guess you can think of it as, the positive number is the standard case and standardly, if you add zeros, this way, you're not changing the number. Right? So, yeah, someone's got a clicky keyboard. Could they mute? Okay, we're good. Thank you. Um, so. Um, that's our first output, one, two. Now, print that. Okay, back up to it. So is B greater than zero? B is two, yep, so subtract uh one again, so subtract one again. So B is now going to be one. So I print again, star, stars, I mean, pound, 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 uh, A is still one. Uh, and then pound, 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 one. Right? Okay, what's next? I go to the end. Okay, is B greater than zero? Yep, B is still greater than zero, so I still subtract one, so it's going to be pound, pound, pound. A is still one, and now B is zero, right? Because I subtracted one from it again, so B is zero. Okay, B is now zero, we leave the while loop. We write X equals X minus B. B is zero, though, so it's X equals X, so X doesn't change. X is just X. Y equals, so I should just say here that this means X equals X. B, uh, Y equals B modulus A, so zero modulus um one. Zero modulus one, yep. So zero modulus one is zero divided by one, what's the remainder? Zero. So Y equals zero. I think, let's see. I print X, Y, uh, so to begin with, X had a value of five. Um, yeah, X had a value of five. So, I am going to print this, so it's going to be seven total places. Two of them are after the decimal place for A, I'm assuming that's supposed to be an LF. Um, pretend that's an LF.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not an LF in this code.
It would not run, it would not run. Um, for that matter. For that matter, this also shouldn't run. Uh, because you're a s- B modulus A returns an integer, always. So can you just assign that integer to this double? No, you have to typecast it. I think you have to typecast it. Maybe let's try that. Let's try that quickly and see if that changes anything. So if I have a, two integers, let's say I have um uh int. A, uh, whatever, equals five, B equals two, and then I have a double. Double Y, it's just Y, it's fine. And then I define Y to be uh A modulus B. That returns an integer. Uh, and, but remember, uh, Y is a double, so if I still try to print it. I should, let's see what we get. Testing one. Save. Uh, run. Uh, okay, so I do, it, it, even though this returns a, even though that returns an integer, since I'm assigning it to a double, it just turns it into a double. That's it. Uh, if I, if I set this equal to an integer, it would not change the program, except, well, sorry, it would change the output. I should just get a one now. No, I get zero. Oh, because it's LF, and that's supposed to be D. So I should just get a nice one. Press F six instead of F five, hopefully I didn't break anything. Yeah, should just get one, instead of one point oh oh oh. What that means is just that, okay, that's okay, uh, Y is just a float, which is equal to zero. So I should get as my output now, okay, so seven, first of all, X, which is five point O. With seven places of justification, two after the decimal. So, um, I get. Oh, oh, point five. It's already four places, I had, I have to add three, one, two, three. And now that's four places, that's five point O with seven justification places to the left, spaces to the left, and two after the decimal. My next one is eight point three LF of Y. So Y is just zero, so I should get um. Yeah, I should get just, uh, to be clear, actually, this would all be on the same line? No, no, there, there was a new line there, I didn't realize there was a new line there. So, uh, these are, these are on the same line. This is going to be eight justification places, three after the decimal, so zero, zero, zero point, uh, and that's already four, so one, two, three, four. Now I realize that this is not exactly what the book says. The books, the answer key, although I have a feeling the answer is not, I don't know, I'd not. Um, there is a technicality here where it doesn't do. It, at some point, it prioritizes something over the justification you write. I can't remember the details of it. It prioritizes the accuracy of the number over the justification that you write? No, that doesn't make sense.
It prioritizes the number of significant digits. Sorry, significant decimal places. So if you.
Oh, I see, so.
Number that has like five point four seven six five two.
Yes, I see.
You tell it, unless you, if you don't tell it to round to a specific number of decimals.
Yeah.
It'll always give you. It'll always give you whatever the entire number.
Mm-hmm.
It has is.
Mm-hmm. I see. Uh, also, I just wanna, plus plus A, wait, what? There's no way that the answer to this is right. Unless I'm missing something big. Uh, apparently, it leaves the for loop now. But that doesn't make sense, because plus plus A would make A equal to two, A is less than B, so it should run the for loop again. And I'd get a whole other set of answers.
It isn't less than B, B is zero.
Um, is B zero? Oh, yeah, I assigned B to zero, you're right. Yeah, 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 okay, I missed that. Yeah, B becomes zero at the end here, right? B becomes zero at the end of everything. At the end of the while loop. Yeah, okay. So is A less than zero? No. So we leave. Um, and I just print the sum is. Okay, um, A plus B plus X plus Y. Okay, well, let's think about this for a second. Okay, so um, A is two. Is A two? Yeah, A is two. Plus B is zero, plus X is five point O, plus Y is zero. Okay, so this is seven point O. So, I um, uh, well, that's the number that's going in there. Okay, so then it's, it's three places of justification. One of which is after the decimal place. Um, so the sum is uh seven point O. Just seven point O, that's it. There, there's three places, and uh, one of which is after the decimal place, seven point O. And there you go. That's it. Uh, in the answer, for some reason, these are on different lines, although that doesn't make sense to me, because uh, there is a new line. Just like up here, just like here is the new line, there's no new line in the middle. So I don't see why they would be on their own separate lines. This is a new line, and just the same as you were doing here, and for here, they're on the same line. Here, they're supposed to be on separate lines. I don't really understand, but that's a very small detail, so. And yeah, there we go. So that's, that's my answer. That is the output. Whoops. That is the output. Okay, is there any last questions for today? Any last question for today? Thank you, Manuel, for still streaming, even though. There is not that, not that many people here. That's, that's okay, you're good now, but thank you very much. Yeah. Yes, of course, of course. Oh, yeah, of course. I am happy.
I feel like people might still struggle with the pointer stuff.
I, I'm probably still gonna struggle with the pointer stuff.
I had to make a program or some shit. That's how you learn shit.
Yeah.
The best way to learn pointers is actually when you do the functions that return, that return more than.
Yeah, I'm sure, which I have not dealt with yet, so that's probably why.
Cause then it makes a lot more sense about like what a pointer is.
Oh, that's me there, hello. Sorry, that was my huge face on the screen all of a sudden.
My head's spinning.
Yeah. Okay, uh, hold on. Okay, well, I guess let's just stay on this, stay on this screen.
This is what happens when you don't put the semicolon at the end of your.
Yeah. That's true.
When you divide by zero.
Yo, Francisco, baby G, it's been a while.
What is your problem, man? What is wrong with you? What is wrong with you? Help exist.
Francisco's my friend. We were in high school together.
I don't know you, man.
He's been to my house. Actually, not my new one, I moved.
Yeah, but I know where you used to live. That's a still thread, I think.
That's true. Okay, so if there's any last questions, let me know. I'll be here for a few more minutes. But then I gotta get going.
Adam, get some rest, man.
Yes, I do need to. Although I actually need to do also my PCS pre-lab for tomorrow, so, well, I gotta do that tonight, so.